Good evening, I'd like to call the order, the Committee of the Whole for the Urbana City Council for May 6, 2024. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
With everyone present in a quorum assembled, we will go to the first item, which is the approval of minutes from previous meetings, both April 1st, 2024 Committee of the Whole, and regular city council meeting from April 8th, 2024. Does anyone have any substantial changes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Would you like a motion?
Oh, I would like one of those.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 1st and the April 8th minutes.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jaya. Now can I have a, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And those minutes pass. Any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go to the next item. Does anyone want to do public input tonight? Well, you're welcome to have five minutes if you'd like to approach the mic, yeah.
I'm David Hayes, I'm the Vice Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, so knowing that on your agenda is a mayoral proclamation for Historic Preservation Month, I'd just love to share with you a few details from the press release issued by the city today about the event taking place this Saturday, May 11th. So the First United Methodist Church of the City of Urbana, in conjunction with the graduate minor in Heritage Studies at the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign, and the Historic Preservation Commission is hosting an open house. There are two ways to join that. One is to meet at the stand in the easternmost bay at Market at the Square at around 11:55, and then to walk over to the church, learning about things along the way. And the other is to meet directly at the church at 304 South Church Street. And so tours are expected to begin around 12:30 PM. So it's a great opportunity, in honor of the month, to explore in depth one of the monuments of our wonderful city.
Thank you. And with that, I would turn this over to Mayor Marlin for a couple proclamations.
Hope this microphone is on. Come on up. Up here, stand here.
Where's your camera?
They're all over. This is a proclamation by the Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois. Whereas, historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas, the City of Urbana has an historic preservation plan and currently has designated 20 local historic landmarks and three historic districts. And whereas, historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for persons of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas, the City of Urbana continues to promote historic preservation by encouraging adaptive reuse of historic structures for both multifamily and commercial uses. And whereas, the Historic Preservation Commission celebrates the recent designation of Canaan Missionary Baptist Church as a local historic landmark for its architectural significance, its noted architect, its prominent placement on historic West Main Street, and the significant position it has played in the civic, cultural, ethnic, and social heritage of the African-American community of Urbana. And whereas, the First United Methodist Church of Urbana and the Department of Landscape Architecture of the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign are hosting a guided open house of this unique 1927 collegiate Gothic structure on May 11th, 2024, in observance of National Preservation Month. Now, therefore I, Diane Wolfe Marlin, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May, 2024, as National Preservation Month in the City of Urbana, Illinois, and call upon the people of Urbana to join their fellow residents across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Thank you. Congratulations. And while you're here, I do want to recognize the long service of Alice Novak, who was our first and only Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission until recently, when she stepped down from that position. So she's just provided a tremendous service to the people of Urbana. Thank you. And we have another proclamation. May is a very busy month. This is a proclamation that today marks our recognition and celebration of the dedicated City of Urbana employees, encompassing essential services, first responders, safety inspectors, administrative assistants, the clerk's office, and others whose unwavering commitment to excellence continually elevates the health, safety, welfare, and prosperity of Urbana residents. And whereas, these invaluable Urbana public servants, embodying the spirit of "here to serve you", ensure that the quality of life for residents, businesses, and visitors in Urbana is of the highest priority. And whereas, City of Urbana staff consistently deliver excellent municipal services while fostering the growth of safe, vibrant, and livable neighborhoods. And whereas, the city acknowledges the significance of all our employees and their respective designated periods of recognition, including Building Safety Month, Public Service Recognition Week, Municipal Clerks Week, International Firefighters Day, Economic Development Week, Administrative Professionals Day, National Police Week, and National Public Works Week. Now, therefore I, Diane Wolfe Marlin, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2024, as "Here to Serve You" Month in the City of Urbana. Actually, every month is "We Are Here to Serve You", but this is a special month. And I encourage all residents to familiarize themselves with how municipal services work and to appreciate the daily contributions of city professionals which improve our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, not just during this month, but all year long. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there, let's see, staff reports? There's no staff reports. Okay, that takes us right into new business. The public works people are going to be busy. I'll let John get in position and Tim. The first resolution tonight will be Resolution Number 2024-05-021R, a resolution approving the capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2025 to 2029. And gentlemen, you have the floor.
Okay, good evening, Council and Mayor. Thank you, we're here to, yes, bring to you the capital improvement plan. We spoke with you about a month ago with a draft of it, and we were coming with a finished version. It was in your packet, along with some, a summary of some of the changes that we made since the last time we met. And so I thought I might do is just kind of step through some of the changes that we made, and then, you know, could take an opportunity to look at the map as a talking point and just answer any questions or have any discussions, as Council sees fit. So, and just kind of going through this revision summary we had, oh, I guess I should say two, this is a reminder of kind of the timeline, where we got to where we are today, with seeking your approval of this capital improvement plan, with the eye towards having its FY '24 allocations in our budget next month. So the changes that we made since April, really relatively minor in nature, for the most part, had to do with estimating our projected expenses for FY '24, just getting that tightened up and more refined, making sure that if some money was not going to get encumbered by the end of June, for example, make sure we have it pushed forward to fiscal year '25, so we'd still have it as needed. This can happen with construction projects, for example. If we have a bid come in under our budget, well, we want to keep that extra budget during construction in case there are additional work that comes up as we go. The, so this is just changes that we carried through. We made sure to include the, some of the newer mayor council strategic goals for 2024, 2025, and tie them to various aspects of the CIP that were in there. Just kind of provide that emphasis for the support from the mayor and the council and the importance to our plan. We provided a little, more of a developed timeline for the parking lot maintenance project, kind of laying out more specifically how we would address which lots and which order the city owned lots through the five-year period. And... That really kind of hits on the highlights there. Now, what we didn't have, I know last time when we met, was a functioning map for the project, showing the project. So could just give you a quick tour of that. The County GIS Consortium helped put us together. And, so, as an example, just kind of show some of the different ways you can sort projects. Say if you want to look at just stormwater projects or just transportation projects. I'm going to look at what is expected to be in construction in fiscal year '25. So you can kind of zoom in and take a look. You know, for example, we have the ARPA lateral lining project in the Dr. Ellis subdivision. We have fire station number three there also in, oh, no, there. See, it clicked on the top one first, I'll toggle over. There's the fire station number three. You can, pops up, pops up a little bit of information about that budget, some basic timeline, and, you know, just browse through the city, see if there's something in your neighborhood, what's going on. We do have, if Council's interested, if I remember where the ward, ward maps are. This might not come up right away. There we go. Can turn on the ward boundaries, if anybody's interested, to kind of see the city dissected like that before Will and you guys change the map, and then these lines don't matter. But we've got a number of these. You'll see a lot of small segments. Going to show up in the... We've got some of the EQL segments showing up, like Geraldine and Highland up here, Division Avenue. So you'll see, you'll see some of the EQL projects broken out, and some of our facilities work, like our Public Works Master Plan, or Public Works Campus, executing the facility master plan. Yeah, so just provide some different options. See what, you know, if somebody wants to know what all the stormwater utility fund's being used for, a way to kind of take a look at that as well, step back and look at these zones that we're working in, which are mostly cleaning and televising zones, but, yeah. So really just something that's more fun to play with than to watch somebody else play with. But I guess I'd invite, you know, Council, if there's any questions or discussion we'd like to have.
Any questions? Sharice, do you have any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, Grace.
Are you stopping at this point, or is that the end of the presentation? Do you want all the questions? Okay. I have a few, if I may, which I appreciate you answering ahead of time, email. I would just go through some of the highlights, if that's okay, unless you had anything prepared to speak on. Especially just realized that the rest of the council wasn't on the email, so in case they also wanted to know. So, first item was, we were just clarifying TIF for budget does end end of December 2025, and fixing a little thing that said 2026. And planning to spend as much as possible, right? And maybe extend or transfer to central TIF, but not planning to return remaining funds to the taxing bodies. And I am still curious on, I imagine that's more of a finance end, and maybe when we get to the budget, but just throwing out there for the powers that be. I am curious, the TIF for remaining balance today and what it would be the end of 2025 with what we've already planned in the CIP. And then for the tree canopy, you said that that's not included in the CIP, and would be up to the mayor if it were included in the budget, which makes sense, I was grappling with that as well, but just saw on page one that the Arbor canopy is considered a city asset and $36 million, and could be a fun project to put the SAC down a rabbit hole too, if you wanted any more quantifying or putting together a goal. It sounded like maybe Scott had a vision of what like a complete urban canopy would look like. Feel free to jump into it, because I'm also throwing out other, like, responses or questions back. You clarified that the demolition is for multiple reasons, that the buildings that we are demoing have been deemed worth demolishing for various reasons, and that we would accept and plan to accept RFPs for uses other than housing for downtown. So that housing is preferred, as well as meeting other goals articulated for downtown. And this is one, again, I feel like we've just gone down a slippery slope where I don't know when we decided that they were for housing in particular. And you clarified that Philo and Cottage Grove kind of street there is on page 37 to 42 in the Transportation section. Thank you, I couldn't find where that piece was named with all the street nomenclatures there. That there are the unfunded projects that we know are needed, but not have current funding available or planned.
Correct.
And my follow-up question on that one was, I was wondering about how the roadway's assessed, if it's like the average of the surface? Like, I was just driving that road again on the way here, and I think the issue is that there's like a big pothole seam, right where, you know, the big tires are going, and kind of pushing people into the bike lane to avoid it. And then same with some other sections, like right by Green Street, is like major potholes in one side, and then the rest of the road's fine. So I also didn't know if our assessment software looks at like the average surface condition or if it can take into account things like, there's a really deep section here, but the rest of it's fine.
Yeah, there's, the software that we've used historically, Paver, you can do analysis based on the different defects that the road is experiencing. So in some cases, you know, there's a singular defect that's affecting the entire average of that subset that can be corrected. Usually on the larger grain, or the larger picture scale, we're looking at the condition assessment, and the idea being that, you know, the blanket of the assessment of that segment is going to tell us if we need to go look at it more or not. If there are instances where there's something like reactive repair via patching, we're probably going to address that with our operations crew before we get there with a capital project.
Okay, thank you. And then just one more question that came up, if I may, was if you could just give us a reminder about the equals projects. It sounds like from this one, we're pushing forward any unencumbered costs from the last round. We plan to do another round in FY '25, but that's not in here, right? That's kind of a budgetary thing before it moves into projects, is that right?
I think the portion, is the design in FY '25?
Yeah, that's the budget, part of the budget for the FY, for the new round of equal would be for design, but you're correct, we have not really developed the next, you know, phase of the equal program, next projects, you know, identified or moved forward with those.
Thank you.
Mary Alice.
So I'm just curious about the city's parking lots that we have. So we're talking about rehabilitating them. Does that also include filling large potholes, since we've been talking about? I actually twisted my ankle two weeks ago in one.
Oh, okay, well, that's terrible, I'm sorry to hear that. But yes, we have $50,000 that we're going to allocate annually for preventive maintenance, and we're going to see, basically, we, our anticipation is to use that for, you know, crack sealing, black topping, pavement markings. So more of the, giving it a fresh surface, not necessarily doing a in-depth rehabilitation of the pavement structure. But we're going to go, you know, we're introducing it as a new program, not that the city has never maintained its parking lots, just we're starting a new program with it. And so we'll have to go and make assessments before we go and put the new surfaces on. And if we're, if we need to do more before we do that, or if we have to reduce the scope of a year because, say, one parking lot just needs more patches filled or something, we'll make adjustments as we go. So we've got a budget that's kind of based on a gross average of things, but we're going to have to make assessments as we, before we actually go do the work each year.
So the, switching gears for a moment, the two properties that the city owns in downtown, those are both slated for demolition, the Civic Center and the Adult Education Building, I believe.
That's correct.
And I think it's $800,000 to demolish those two?
It's more than that. The Adult Ed Center has some environmental hurdles that we've got to get over with it as well, so that's driving that price up. And the Civic Center is kind of, it's in the queue, but we don't have an active development at this point in time. So it's kind of, we want it, we want it programmed in, I'll say, but whether that happens in that same timeframe or not is to be determined.
But both of those are slated for this upcoming fiscal year, is that correct?
The demolition for the Civic Center would start as early as this fiscal year, but we have to see, we have to get through the Adult Ed first, which is providing challenges.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Sharice, did you have any questions?
No, I really don't. What I did want to say earlier was, and I guess I hit the wrong button on my phone, that I thought, I appreciate the work that everyone is doing regarding the sewer sanitary lining, relining, and that they've worked really well with the community to try to get as many participants as possible, and I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Grace?
I was curious about the funding here for the following resolutions that are also part of the capital improvement plan. So I think it's okay to ask now as well. Specifically, like, for example, the Florida Shared Use Path. So I didn't know if you could help remind us what ITEP is and rebuild, first of all?
Sure, definitely. So, yeah, the two shared use paths, you'll see in the budget, Florida Avenue and the Baker's Lane, we received grants for those. ITEP stands for the Illinois Transportation, Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program. And rebuild refers to a rebuild Illinois that was state, state funding, kind of related to the pandemic. And essentially what we got with that is these projects, because of the specific demographics of our application, we received full funding rather than an 80% funding. And the rebuild Illinois does the 20% to fill in that gap.
And then with both of those, the state motor fuel tax is kind of like our contribution? Is that right?
What it ends up doing is it's like, we pay for it upfront, and then we get reimbursed. So we use the state MFT money to pay for it upfront. And if we have any expenses outside of the grant associated with these projects, then we'll pay for it with state MFT, which could happen if, for example, we decide to do something slightly beyond the limits of the grant as it was applied for, or if costs get above the grant.
And then that's why some of those numbers aren't exactly the same?
Yes, that's correct.
Like Florida Avenue, state motor fuel tax is $40,000, but in the project budget, it's just $28,000. Is that what that difference is accounting for, or no?
You would expect that, I don't know if I heard you quite right, and I apologize, but you would expect the state motor fuel tax expense line to be higher than the revenue, because we do have a couple of things that are getting outside of the grant. One example would be with the Baker's Lane path. It ends at Main Street at the north. There's been some developments where there's going to be some more direct connectivity with the Kekupu Rail Trail, with some recent property acquisition that was attained by the Champaign County Forest Preserve District. And so we're including a little work to get across Main Street that wasn't in the grant, because we didn't, we couldn't be for sure that that property acquisition was going to go through at the time.
Thank you.
James?
Just a little bit of clarification, maybe this is budget voodoo, but when we get reimbursed from the grant for money that we spent from the state motor fuel tax, does that go, does the reimbursement go in the general fund? Or does it replace monies in the motor fuel line item?
I think the way we present that is that it goes back to the state motor fuel tax fund balance to replenish those funds. But, you know, that's probably potentially an Elizabeth Han in question to dive further into.
I'll remember to ask her that.
Yeah, the way we project it is that.
Shandra?
You, it said in the report that you'll be doing a pavement condition index assessment again this year. When exactly will that be?
Well, we are about to execute a contract with a company for that work, and we're expecting them to start really as soon as we get that contract, so this month. They're expecting to have the results of the field work done by August, so basically over the summer, they'd collect the field data for all of our city streets and parking lots.
And will that impact your, what am I trying to say, like your...
Prioritization matrix?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, that'll feed into that. So how it is now is the assessment, for the last assessment, it was 2019, 2020. Now we're five years in. Year over year, what we do is we make assumptions based on the work we've done to update those assessments. So if we've done and done Green Street, for example, with the MCor project, that was, you know, a much worser evaluation before. Actually, I think that one was right at the front end of this, so we went ahead and basically beefed it up immediately. But other ones, if we've went and done like Windsor Road resurfacing, we went in there and worked with our consultant to update with assumed data, if it was a 30 PCI before, and now it's a 90 PCI or something since being rehabilitated. And then there's degradation curves that start after that. But then, the idea is, once every five years, now we're truing up our assumptions over year to year since 2019, 2020. So we'll see if the assumptions that we've built in and the degradation models that they've built in of the different defects that these roads seize year over year are accurate, and are we in a better place, a worse place? Are we as predicted at this point in time? But yes, it will feed into that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, do I have a motion? Grace?
I had a, where to proceed your question, can I omnibus all these?
So you can omnibus, but we haven't actually received the presentations for the subsequent items so far. All that has been presented is the capital improvements one, so...
Could we present on the others and then omnibus them then? Or what's our procedure here?
I would just recommend do the CIP, because all the other ones are subsequent of the CIP being... And then you could omnibus the other ones, that's just my, my take on it.
That is what I would recommend as well. Just because then if there were further questions or clarification too, it's already a part.
Thank you. Then I would move for approval on the regular agenda, Resolution Number 2024-05-021R, Resolution Improving Capital Improvement Plan, fiscal years 2025 to 2029.
Second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Mary Alice. Discussion, Jaya?
Yeah, we had a community member and former council member mention that there, it stated that the last tax increase was in 2011, but he shared some information with us that there was one in July of 2015. So I just wanted to make sure that we correct that.
Local motor fuel tax?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I think that that might be right. I think we, at some point, we jumped from four cents to five cents.
Right, yeah, so that information was provided to the council by email, and so just would recommend making that addition.
James?
Just checking to be sure, this is for the regular agenda and not consent?
Regular agenda.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Grace?
Just wanted to say, thanks so much for putting this together. It's always a learning process. I feel like this, this is the third, second or third time around, making even more sense. Thanks for all of your patience in answering questions. And I really like the systemic, kind of organized, prioritized way of going through that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Sharice, did you have any comments?
No, no comment, thank you.
Okay. Can we do the voice vote on this, clerk? Okay, all those?
You can always request a voice vote if that is the preference, but it is not final action and it is a resolution, so you could do, yeah, voice.
Okay, all right. All right, we'll go with a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All not in favor, say nay, nay. And the ayes have it, that resolution will be sent to the next city council meeting for the regular agenda. The next item is resolution number 2024-05-002R, supplemental resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, the state motor fuel tax for Florida Avenue Shared Use Path.
Okay, thank you. And so we will kind of talk about all six of these MFT resolution amendments, resolutions at once.
Okay, John, I'll go ahead and read them all off, so.
Sounds great, thank you.
Yeah. Also, resolution number 2024-05-023R is supplemental resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motor fuel tax for Baker's Lane Shared Use Path. Resolution number 2024-05-024R, supplemental resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motor fuel tax for Colorado Avenue Resurfacing. Resolution number 2024-05-025R, a supplemental resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motor fuel tax for Boneyard Creek Crossing Bridge Repairs. And number six, the resolution number 2024-05-026R, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motor fuel tax for Springfield Avenue, Wright Street to Gregory Street Resurfacing. And resolution number 2024-05-027R, resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motor fuel tax for Vine Street and Illinois Street Improvements. And gentlemen, you have the floor.
Well done. All right, so yes, we have six resolutions here, which as a kind of a refresher on the past MFT resolutions we talked about, this is an administrative step to where, for us to be able to use the state MFT money that is in the CIP, allocated in the CIP. You know, aside from it going and getting approved through our fiscal year 25 budget, we also need to send resolutions to IDOT to appropriate these funds before we're able to use them. So it's really a continuation of some of the projects that were in the CIP. You know, what we have for these projects is really just being consistent with those budgets. So, you know, here's asking council to pass the resolutions for these six projects. And touching on kind of the, what I just said out loud. Where IDOT just wants to make sure that we have an adequate balance in our state motor fuel tax fund before we get things started with design work or construction contract, for example. So just to step through some of these briefly, what will, you'll see that I have a number of supplements in here. And really what that means is we've had something, we've had a resolution in the past, and either we had a budget increase where we needed a little bit more money, or we're stepping into a different phase of the project that we hadn't appropriated funds for before. You know, we're basically appropriating for the budget we have in fiscal year 25, not necessarily for the life of the project, for, you know, however many phases a project might go through, design, construction, planning, things like that. So for the Florida Avenue Shared Use Path, you know, Grace touched on it with some of her questions earlier. We have a little bit extra money that we'll need for some, outside of grant spending, asking to appropriate another $40,000 for this project, which we're just getting design kicked off this week, in fact. Baker's Lane Shared Use Path, similar, extra funds outside of the grant, asking for appropriation of $110,000. And this is largely tied to the concept of having this like mid-block crossing across Main Street here at the north end that will provide this direct connectivity with the Kekapu Rail Trail, which is going to have an extension up to Smith Road in the near future. We have the Colorado Avenue Resurfacing Project. This is gonna be a sister project to the Philo Road Resurfacing, which will happen this year. And so this is, this is an example of where, when we take a project, say, that was designed as one project, Philo and Colorado was designed as one project. And if we're going to split it into separate construction contracts, IDOT's procedures is that we just need to create like a separate section number, a separate identification number, and have a separate resolution for each project. So this one, as well as the Springfield Avenue one, and a couple slides, is example of implementing the project in different phases for construction. So asking for an appropriation of $1,690,000 to cover the construction of this resurfacing project, which goes from Vine Street to Philo Road. And then the Boneyard Creek Crossing Bridge Repairs, this is for the Race Street Bridge that goes over Boneyard Creek. We had appropriated just enough funds for a design previously, and now we're just appropriating funds for the anticipated repairs to the bridge. And so that is the $310,000 appropriation for that. And then for Springfield Avenue, we have the larger Springfield Avenue Resurfacing Project, which includes segments of Springfield from Wright Street to McCullough. We're going to approach the Kohler Avenue to McCullough segment first. And that one is what we're using the previously appropriated MFT resolutions for, because we're doing it in two separate segments. For reasons that we decided, as we were getting into the details of it, it didn't make sense to, to bid these two together. They're separate enough in distance, there's enough difference in the kind of work that's being done. It makes sense to make them two separate construction bids. And so this is the western part from Wright Street to Gregory Street, requesting appropriation of $1,430,000 for this. And then for our, one of our new projects where we're starting, we're gonna start design this fiscal year is for improvements to Vine Street and Illinois Street here in downtown. And as you can see in the map there, Vine is from California to Maine, Illinois is from Race to Urbana Avenue. And we're just appropriating funds for design, which is looking at $370,000 in appropriation. And like we've discussed on past ones, these appropriations are intentionally inflated to include a 10% contingency, to kind of make sure that we have the, it matches what we can do with our budgets, with our purchasing policy in the event of a small overrun of like, say, plus or minus 10%. So that is what I've got on those. Happy to have any questions or discussion.
Okay, we'll take questions on all six road projects, so anybody have any questions? Shandra?
I'm wondering, like for instance, at the Vine and Illinois Streets, will there be, you know, the shared paths or bike lanes in the design?
Potentially, yeah. We, we definitely want to be, to take the findings and the recommendations from the Public Realm Study and use that as an opportunity to see what we can implement with these. You know, we believe that there's opportunity to do some road dieting, to give up some space to other modes of travel. Illinois Street seems like a really, really obvious opportunity in that regard. Vine Street's got, it's got a good amount of traffic, but we know that just south of here, it narrows down to two lanes, to one in each direction. So yeah, Shandra, I think that's definitely gonna be something we look into in design.
Grace?
Could you remind us how it works with the university? Like that Springfield Avenue section isn't university, apparently?
Right, and so that is our street to, we own and operate that street. The university has some maintenance and ownership responsibilities. For example, the streetscape between Wright and Matthews, right there, kind of in the heart of engineering campus, they have some streetscape that we coordinate with them about. But otherwise, yeah, this happens to be one that's, that's, it's all Urbanas.
James?
Are we ready for a motion?
Sharice, do you have any questions?
No, well, I guess I have one question, kind of like what, what Grace was talking about, because the, I've driven down Springfield from Wright Street, and don't they have like bicycle paths and stuff on that? Are we going, how is that going to work? Are you, are, are, are we resurfacing or just resurfacing? Or are we redesigning that to Springfield? That's what I'm wanting to understand, I guess.
Okay, sure. So for Springfield Avenue, we're not changing the cross-section of the road, we're not changing the lane configurations. We're gonna just improve the pavement and should go back in operation as it does today.
Okay, I just wanted to understand that, thanks.
Yep.
All right, I'd like to move that we consider items two through seven, which incorporate resolutions number 2024-05-022R and 023R, 024R, 025R, 026R, and 027R as an omnibus motion.
Second.
Moved by James, seconded by Jaya. Discussion. Oh, no discussion. Sharice, did you have any comments?
Nope.
Okay. Clerk, we can do this omnibus as a voice vote again? Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
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 All against, say nay. The ayes have it, all those resolutions will be moved. Did we move that to the right?
Now I'll make a motion to pass that omnibus bill to the city council for approval on the regular agenda.
Regular agenda, okay. Moved by James, seconded by Mary Alice. Do we need another vote? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All against, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving on, we have a discussion regarding the ward maps. And Will, I think you're gonna be helping us out, and I'm gonna turn things over to Mayor Marlin.
Thank you, Chris. Just as a reminder, we currently have a total of nine proposed ward maps. Couple of weeks ago, council was provided with a tool you could use or not use, but it would help rank the maps from number one, which would be your top choice, to number nine, which would be your last choice. And the tool used some data points from Dave's redistricting that included population deviation, minority representation, compactness scores. And there were some other more object, or subjective criteria, such as keeping traditional neighborhoods, accommodating potential population changes due to the special census, and distribution of residence halls among various wards. But the goal of the tool, whether or not you chose to use it or not, was to identify your top three maps that you'd like to consider further. So Will has received rankings from seven council members and myself. And he can provide, first of all, what the results of, or rankings are, and then we can go from there.
Great, thank you. So I'll be really brief, and I'll just kind of go over what everybody submitted to me.
Speaking to the microphone?
Sorry, I gotta bring it really close. I'll just go over real briefly what everybody submitted, and then it'll be open for your discussion. So what you see in front of you is the total of all the rankings. On the top, you'll see what the average score of each map was for map one through nine. And then below that, in italics, you'll see how many times that map was either ranked first, second, or third. And then just similar to, you know, MVP votes, where the first would get three points, the second would get two points, and the third ranked would get one point, you can see that at the bottom. And that's just kind of a different way of looking at how people viewed it in addition to average score, since averages can kind of be misleading sometimes. But you'll see either way, maps seven, eight, and nine were the runaway favorites for the rankings. And they were all pretty close to each other as far as how people viewed them. And then these are just maps seven, eight, and nine. And so that's really all I have is for you, is just kind of, unless you have any questions about the rankings or anything like that. I think it was just, if you look at the chart above, you know, I think it's pretty clear where people's preferences lied.
So as we had discussed a few weeks ago, the proposed next step was for the council to identify one, two, or three maps at this stage of the game to put back out for public feedback. You have the option tonight of picking one to solicit feedback on, two, or all three. And we think we can, it would be reasonable to post the finalists, and we can call these finalists at this point, from starting Wednesday, May 8th, through Friday, May 24th. So that's about two and a half weeks. People can submit their comments via the special email that was set up for this process. And then we'd come back for the May 27th council meeting and discuss the, come to a consensus on a final map that you want to propose, bring that to committee of the whole, and then that would go to the city council. So there'll be several more weeks, or several more opportunities for discussion here. But if anyone wants to comment on the maps tonight, if you have thoughts on how many you'd like to put out for public feedback, that would be great.
Okay, I'm gonna call James first and then Mary Alice.
Thanks. I would, I thank you first for the work to get the rankings together. Could you back up one, one page for a second? Maybe, maybe not. Okay, I think it's pretty clear that these three, seven, eight, and nine, were, had strong support across the board. Yes, one came out at the top and one's a little bit lower. But I would be totally comfortable with putting these out as the three finalists for consideration, so that the public can have a look at several different options and see the details underlying them and make comments on them. I will say that I, I come to that recommendation from my experience with the county redistricting in 2012, where the committee that was working on that was initially only considering one map at a time. And it was going through, it was kind of gridlocked, because it was doing that. And only when they accepted the suggestion that they consider multiple maps at the same time, did that move forward more quickly. So I think, I think the community would benefit from, from having choices and being able to, you know, weigh in on the pros and cons of the choices that do seem to come out strong. There's not another one on this list that got more than one, one ranking, right? So that, that's why I would suggest using all three and the underlying factors that make me feel that way.
Mary Alice?
So, so two things I wanted to bring up. I did communicate this to Will when I sent in my rankings. And I think most people are familiar with the University of Illinois, I would guess. So map seven, if you can pull up map seven right now, has all but one, two, three. So it has five different dorms. And any University of Illinois employee is banned from doing any kind of, like, trying to convince people to... banned from doing any kind of elect, trying to convince people to vote for them, any kind of electioning. So that's one of the reasons why map seven really, really concerns me, because ward one only has a few blocks that you can actually campaign in. All the rest of them cannot be campaigned in if you are a University of Illinois employee. So that's number one. The, the second thing that I'd like to add, A, I do think it's a good idea to put out multiple maps for the public to comment. And just because we have these three maps, I know that there are small tweaks that still can be done. So in addition to having community members say which ones they, they think best represent the city of Urbana, if there are slight changes, it's possible to do something small. It's very challenging to get these be as close as possible to the little deviation. I know Grace worked on one. It's, it's very challenging, but I'm not saying it's impossible, so.
Grace.
I agree with those previous statements about selecting these three, appreciating input from the public and any specific points they can give us, and agree, yeah, in addition to anything that specifically they find beneficial or concerning about any map. And yeah, I totally agree with Mary Alice that there may be some bits and pieces that we could combine. Like Mary Alice said, you know, her familiarity with campus and her ward obviously makes sense. So I think that, yeah, whatever bits and pieces we can take as well would be helpful.
James.
Unless somebody else wants to talk first, this would be my second time. One thing I did want to mention with, with the tool that I noticed is that the scoring for minority, majority districts has, I feel, has a flaw in it, wherein if you had a district that was 60% minority and 40% white, if those minorities were split 20, 20, 20, it would still get the high score that it, that it gets. So it doesn't really lead to a, if the thought is, there's, that a minority-majority district represents a particular group, it, it doesn't do that. So for example, if we felt strongly that there needs to be an African-American ward, or a ward where an African-American has a, has a statistical support in being, getting representation, it, it, the scoring model that this spreadsheet uses, or it's got to be the websites, doesn't, doesn't do that. It, it considers minority in aggregate as opposed to minority in particular groups being represented. And so I found that it was giving stronger scores to maps that I did not feel would lead to representation.
Sharice, did you have any comments?
Yeah, I, I was concerned, kind of like almost what James said, only the, the thing is, in, in when I was using, trying to use the, the tool or whatever, this is the thing with my ward, is that it is a minority-majority ward. And, um, um, that's why, like, for me, map nine just wasn't going to work at all. So, but I felt that map eight was, did a, a more decent job of keeping, like, the traditional boundaries, and particularly certain parts of ward three that have always been represented by, in ward three. I, I felt that that was important, too, to try to keep the, the boundaries as traditional as possible, so people aren't confused as to what wards, like, well, I was in ward two, and now I'm in ward, you know, one, and, or however. I think we have to keep that in mind. I know that's what I was looking for when I was looking at the maps, as, as well as the, somewhat of the traditional boundaries, so that, um, our, the, the residents wouldn't be confused by who they would be represented by concerning city council, so on and so forth. So I, I think that's something that also should be kind of considered. And I, I felt that there were a couple of maps that, that tried to keep as traditional a representation as possible, you know, as, as, or boundaries as possible. So I think that's something else that needs to be considered when looking at these three maps.
Grace, oh, go ahead, Sharice.
No, I think, that's it, that's, that's kind of all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Grace?
Thanks. I think those are all good points, and I'm curious, the past historical maps, you know, I'm not really familiar beyond, or previously to this current one, so I don't know if that's a request we could make to the mayor, Will, anyone, if it would be possible to fish out some of the older maps. I only see the current one available easily online. So I think that would be helpful. And, yeah, I hear the points about keeping some neighborhoods. I did want, do you want to point out that, you know, also map eight, you know, as far as from a ward six perspective, you are also changing some pretty important neighborhoods there. The whole kind of Learman Avenue neighborhood, Rainbow, all around there is no longer in ward six. And now that Silver Hearts area that has been ward seven, and pretty involved as far as I know, is no longer in seven, and now in six. So I think that there are going to be some changes and give and takes regardless. I definitely understand the, the significance of ward three being a historically black ward, and I think that that's something to definitely consider. And I can absolutely see the side of keeping it that way. And I was also seeing, you know, the other side of, do we, I see the value in keeping it, and I can also see some value in potentially changing historic segregation. If we say that University Avenue is that hard kind of line, do we keep that structure in our ward map, or is that something that we're interested in changing? So I think that those are kind of some deeper questions to consider, and I appreciate people's input on it.
Jaya.
Can I say something to that real quick?
Yeah, go ahead, Sharice.
The thing about ward three is that, um, um, yes, it, you know, University Avenue was a cutoff in earlier historical, you know, times with Urbana regarding where, where the African-American population were allowed to, to live, so to speak. But ward three also has, had, and has still, and even Ellis subdivision now, has quite a few residents that are not, not African-American. And, um, even though the, when I, when I talk about majority-minority ward, there, right now, and, and I've said this from onset, there's always been a demographic in, in ward three that was more than just, um, the tribe that was living there, or allowed to live there. We have a high Asian population now. We have, our, our demographic is more, also, we have a lot of older people that live in, um, ward three. And, um, and we still have, you know, a high white population that live there, and, and are, um, living in all parts of ward three. So the higher demographic is, you know, has been based in, based on, as far as African-Americans, because of, well, history, it, that's not going to, um, necessarily, um, uh, change, I think, even, you know, that much. Um, I, my, my concern is just trying to have representation of, um, of as, as many of the, of the subgr-, subgroups, so to speak, as, as possible, including African-Americans. And those traditional boundaries that I'm talking about are boundaries where a lot of black people were, have, have resided for decades. And for them to, um, be confused about what ward they, they live in when they, you know, for the past 60 years, it's been ward three, and then all of a sudden it gets changed up. I don't, I don't know if, um, if that would be good for voter turnout, and so on and so forth, just like changing the precincts, and changing the, where the voter, where the voting booths were kind of confused a lot of people in the last election as to where they would go vote. And I think changing the representation would be also just as confusing for some. That's, that's my point.
Thank you. Jaya?
Yeah, I, I think I had kind of a similar experience. I think the, Will put together a really useful tool for us, but trying to figure out how do we capture some of the traditional boundaries of a ward was not something I found particularly easy to do. I know that that was one of the pieces. But I do think that that's, that's going to require some conversation, right? Like, you know, map nine looks a lot, ward four looks a lot more like ward four does now, but I think that this is where the conversation piece is going to have to come in, is we're not going to have a map that's going to mirror what we have, right? You know, we, we have to make this change. I think a lot of us are having a hard time with it, because for anyone to suddenly be in a new ward, especially if there is that long history, it's going to be disruptive. And I think, you know, there, there was the opportunity to kind of put that, that score in there of, like, you know, based on the traditional neighborhoods. But I think that there's going to be a level that we just have to have a conversation about, how do we prioritize keeping, you know, some of those really important neighborhoods in the same ward, or where is there going to have to be that compromise? So I think getting public feedback is helpful, because looking at this, I think we're, we're all kind of having that, "Wah" reaction that I think we had to begin with. And I think we have more data to go off of, that we're closer. But I do think that getting public input at this point would be useful, partially so we, we know how best to prioritize this very difficult decision, right? I don't, I think, it's not, it's, we're not going to end up with what we have, because we can't.
Go ahead, Mayor.
You're right. And this map is significantly a bigger change than the map from 2010 compared to 2000, because these are only done every 10 years. So, so when we, I wasn't involved in drawing the map into 2010, although I did vote on the ultimate one. But it was basically a kind of tweaking the 2000 map, because things hadn't really changed. But given the population growth in certain parts of the city, like South Urbana, and given the, the 2020 census decline near campus, we do have to, these boundaries are going to be different. And in the past, there was an attempt to capture basically the entire eastern part of the city in one ward from top to bottom, and that just doesn't work anymore. So, so these maps are going to be different, and it's, it means a change for, for some of the wards, significant change for some of the wards. So.
I guess we need to kind of flesh out what next steps are, and it feels like-
Is there consensus for, is there consensus to put these three maps out for coming?
Go ahead, Grace.
Yes, could you just remind us, Diane, I'm sorry, I was writing down while you were talking at the beginning. You said, "Put them for consideration until May 24th," and there's an email for people to submit comments?
Yes, and that'll be on the city website.
Mary Alice.
I was just going to ask if we can either push it out. I won't be here on that meeting. If we can't, that's okay, I can submit my comments, but-
The 27th?
I won't be here on the 27th. Well, I won't be here either on the 27th.
That would put it out, well, we could push it to committee of the whole, which would be the third.
I'll be here then.
Okay. They actually allowed two days for final map discussion. Okay. So it'd be, it would go to committee of the whole for selection of the final map. There could be a discussion on the 27th, or the 28th, and then that would move out of committee to the council on the 10th. And if you'd like, we could dig out historical maps from 2000 and 2010, if that would help. Okay.
Well, 2010 is the current.
2010 is the current map, believe it or not.
And going, going back to 1990 is not worthwhile.
Pardon?
Going back to 1990 is not worthwhile.
No.
The city has changed significantly since then.
And today we have, you know, universal voting centers, vote by mail, precincts, and polling places aren't as big a consideration as they once were in terms of a ward. But, okay, then that's what we'll do.
Grace.
Can you clarify, so we, we'll be able to see previous maps, or not? Because I think my point was not to use it as a template, I'm not saying recreate the 1990s map, I'm saying if we're talking about historical neighborhoods, I don't know what those are outside of the current map.
Well, we can give you a map from 2000, which is the ward map from 2000, which is based on the 2000 census. And then the current map is based on the 2010 census. And that's about as far back that makes sense to go, really.
Thank you.
Sharice, did you have any final thoughts?
Um, no, I, I think that, um, having more, you know, deliberation regarding this kind of decision is a, is a wise one, so.
Chandra?
Yeah, I was going to say, if we want to get some substantial public input, we need to make sure that we're talking about this to our constituency, promoting it as best as we can, because they need to know that these changes are coming. So, it's just-
Okay, Will, do you understand what's going on? Okay, great. Okay, I guess that kind of wraps it up. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, for leading that discussion. Our next item is council input and communications. Anybody got any thoughts?
Um, I'd like to say something.
Go ahead, Sharice.
Um, and get it over. I want, I, I again want to, um, because I've done some walking in my, in Ellis subdivision to remind people to fill out their release forms, so that they can get their sewers, their sanitary lines televised. I just want to state that again, that we're, they're still taking applications, and, and they're still accepting releases, even though the due date has gone, has been passed. But so please return, and if, if anyone has not yet signed a release and, and sent it back to Public Works, please do that ASAP, and, so that the, they can get on with the next, the next stage of what's going to happen regarding the sewer, the, the line, linings.
Thank you, Sharice. Go ahead, Mayor.
I have several items of information. First of all, I wanted to thank Sharice for following up on that. We, as I understand, as I understand it, we have over 70% now of the eligible residents, property owners in the Ellis subdivision who've signed up for the sewer lateral project. And this was one of the ARPA allocations that the council made. So this is very important, and this is great. So thank you, Sharice, for all you've done to follow up. Secondly, each of you has an apple at your chair. This is from H, H Mart. And today marks the start of the renovation of the Save-A-Lot store, so you'll see activity there for the next few months. So H Mart is coming, and enjoy these apples, they're really good. I wanted to invite the council and the public to come to the Third Annual Mayoral Recognition Program. You do have an invitation at your seat. This year, 102 Urbana High School students volunteered 10,310 hours. This is double what they did last year. So we'll be recognizing on Wednesday night, 102 students and their families, teachers, supporters, and mentors for, for helping them achieve this goal, and most of all, thanking them for everything they've done, for our community and others. So it's just remarkable what these young people have done. And it's, it's like one of my favorite- And it's like one of my favorite events of the entire year. And thirdly, I wanted to let folks know that I traveled to Washington, DC, last week with Champaign County First. We advocated for a number of projects. Over a two-day period, we had a 20-person group this year. We had meetings with various federal officials and agencies. We focused on nine projects. The projects this year included the continued 3D mapping of the Mohammed Aquifer, Florida Avenue reconstruction to a complete street in Urbana. We advocated for the IFAB tech hub here on campus, the Champaign County African-American Heritage Trail, planning funds to address concerns with the Bradley Avenue Canadian National Railroad Crossing, expansion for the MTV Hydrogen Station, reconstruction of Parkland Way Road, and improved passenger rail service via Amtrak plus high-speed rail. We met with the U.S. Department of Transportation, the Federal Railway Administration with Amtrak, State of Illinois Federal Affairs Office, University of Illinois Federal Affairs Office. We had meetings in person with Representative Mary Miller, Robin Kelly, Nikki Budzinski, and Darren LaHood, and we met with Senator Dick Durbin and Senator Tammy Duckworth. And then there was an informal meeting with Mayor Chris Kuss of Normal, who also serves on the Amtrak Board. And delegates this year represented various communities in the county, the University of Illinois, the Champaign County Environmental Stewards, the Chamber of Commerce, and Prairie Research Institute, Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, and then the Mass Transit District. And I just wanted to thank the Champaign County Chamber of Commerce for spearheading this. They organized this trip, and it's incredibly effective. And actually, it's been very useful and productive for our community. So I appreciate their assistance with that. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, seeing nothing else, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.